Yeah.
Okay, here we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council, New, City of Newburgh, City Council Business Work Session. Let me start that again. Work Session for August 3rd, 2020. This will be followed at 7 o'clock by the Business Session. So, so a couple of you, including Martin, I think you may be actually for the 7 o'clock. So, sorry, you're welcome to stay, but just so you know. And then TIG and Dave and all that will also be during the Business Session. So, but moving on to this evening, how's about a roll call, Sue?
Okay, Councillor Gernell Holloman.
Here.
Councillor Martinez Plankertis. I see her, but I can't hear her.
Here.
Mayor Rogers. Councillor Bacon.
Here.
Councillor Finley. Mr. Mayor, all present with the exception of Districts 4 and 5, which are vacant at this time.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Now, the review of the agenda and meeting, any comments or changes you'd like to see on the Business Session? All right, hearing none. Let's move on. Any business items that you'd like to bring up at this point, folks? Okay, again, hearing none. Let's move on to the Presentations. Item 5A, City Council Goal, Community Engagement and Community Leadership. And I think I've got Lacy and Dan on for this one.
Lacy raised her hand. Okay. Oh, guess I should promote her to panelists. Lacy, are you there? All right, I'm gonna stop the show for just a minute. All right, hang on a sec. Now, I'll go back and share. It doesn't like it when I put other things over the top of it, so it gets cranky and puts this little red box, which is annoying, so. Okay.
All right, sorry about that. Looks like I had the invite for the August 17th meeting, which is not today. Fine. So, we're gonna talk about community engagement and leadership today. Both Dan and I will be providing some input about this goal. And though this was not one of the five identified council goals earlier in the year, it is, both topics are relevant from the A Newburgh Community Vision, and they also kind of touch on each of the other goals that you all set in January. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Toto was being cranky. There we go.
No problem. All right, so these are a few questions for the council to think about while going through the presentation. So, some of the options, like what does successful community engagement look like? How do we make it accessible to all groups? What does succession planning look like for community leadership? Who can the city partner with for community engagement? Are there people that we should be partnering with that we're not? And what activities in particular does the council want to prioritize when it comes to community engagement and community leadership? Next slide, please. So first off, what is community engagement? I'm actually gonna start this with saying what is it not? And it is not public relations or promotion. Community engagement is not about selling what you're already doing or telling people just what you're doing in general. It's more of a two-way street. So, it's about developing strategies and processes that better engage the community. I don't know how well you can see the graphics, but it's a lot of things. So, it's consultation, it's education, it's communication, it's input, it's partnership, and participation are all elements of community engagement. It means seeking community input to make everything that we do better. And it's about more than just getting one response back from a survey. It's about then engaging that person for future surveys and telling them how their response impacted what we did. Next slide, please. Then going on to community leadership, this is both formal and informal. Obviously, you all are in formal community leadership positions with your roles on the council. This is also our committees, so our renewal community, as well as our more long-term communities, like affordable housing and the Planning Commission. It's also leadership from our partner organizations, so organizations like TB FNR, CPRD, as well as the Chamber and the Downtown Coalition. And it's all of the people who sit on those boards for our partner organizations, as well as the nonprofits in town that impact everything that we do, and their volunteers. And then, in a more informal sense, it's also about task force that people set up because they want to change something about the city. They're community leaders in their own right, as well as those who just hold influence in the community. So, you know, you've heard of influencers on Instagram. Every town has influencers too. And really, an influencer is just anyone who people trust and seek out information from. And so, those are all forms of community leadership that need to both be acknowledged and encouraged in our community. Next slide, please. All right, this quote, "Informed and engaged residents create better communities," I actually stole from Slate Communications because when I saw it, I found it particularly inspiring, especially in my role. So really, this is about, communities are made up of people, and the more engaged residents are, the more our policies, practices, and everything we do reflects back on the community values, and that makes us better. So, the more informed residents are, the more that they can tell us when we're doing something that doesn't make sense, where something could be improved, or they can tell us if we're heading in the right direction, and they want to see more of that type of activity. The point is that we are a part of this community because we want to be. Everyone who is a part of this community in some aspects has chosen to be here. I mean, sometimes you can't choose, but in those regards, you can still try to make your situation better. And so, the more people care and are able to express that they care, the better off we all are. Next slide, please. So, in the A Newburgh Community Vision for 2040, which was adopted by the council on August 22nd, 2019, two of the main topic areas, the first two, were actually community engagement and community leadership. And because we're talking about that tonight, I thought it might be beneficial to kind of go over those two topic areas when we're talking about this goal. So, as far as community engagement, I wanted to go over the vision statement for that. So, the vision for community engagement was, "In Newburgh, engagement is a part of who we are. We give our time, talents, and treasures to strengthen the community. We blend service into our jobs and institutions, help each other, and pride ourselves in donating and shopping locally. Our authentic relationships serve as a strong foundation for a supportive community." And I just wanna kind of point out both the overarching goals that we have. The school number was one, build support networks between neighbors and within neighborhoods, as well as point out that in our community vision, not every strategy that we've identified has the city as the lead organization. And so, part of community engagement is figuring out how we interact with those that we've identified as lead organizations, and how we activate them to kind of, you know, go towards these strategies that we've identified as being beneficial for everyone, as well as how are we laying out timelines? How are we helping them to do these things, and how are we getting input from them about what's working and what isn't? Next slide, please. So, the two other goals within community engagement, Goal 2, promote strong relationships and networks between and among individuals and social service organizations in the wider community. And Goal Number 3, develop a spirit of service throughout the community. So, these are just, you know, goals to think on as we're thinking about an even overarching goal of community engagement for the city, as well as strategies that have been identified by our community as things that residents want to see happen here in Newburgh in the short, mid, and long term. Next slide, please. So, the vision for community leadership was, "Our leaders come from diverse groups, backgrounds, and sectors throughout the community and surrounding region. They foster creative, two-way communications and collaborate to ensure Newburgh's long-term success." This one was a bit of a shorter topic area. The two goals are improve leadership collaboration and to develop new leaders. And as you can see, the strategy under Develop New Leaders, create leadership mentorship programs that encompass all ages. That is obviously a huge task and can probably be broken out into even more sectors other than just having young professionals of the Yamhill Valley. The question of how we develop them even younger is a question too, you know, getting ingrained in these schools, whether it's high school or middle school. Because obviously, you know, students have a lot of valuable input, and they have a lot of valuable input about how they're experiencing their community, as well as how they can be better leaders in their community. And a lot of students are really looking for those opportunities. Next slide, please. Okay, so I wanted to go over some of the current community engagement tactics that we utilize. So, as far as social media goes, the City of Newburgh has four different accounts on social media, on Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, and YouTube. The Police Department has four accounts as well. The Library has three accounts, and the Public Works Department has one account. And we also utilize our website to post press releases, update projects, and disseminate information. So, a lot of our social media and website use is more about pushing out information that we already have right now. And so, there's a question of how we utilize those platforms that we already have to have better engagement with our audiences. Our Facebook account has, I believe, 2,500 followers. And of those, about 500 to 600 people see our posts whenever we post something. And so, how are we utilizing that audience to ensure that what we are doing is the right thing and really soliciting more opinions and information from them? You know, that social media can be a little bit tricky in that aspect, but there's definitely ways to use it to our benefit. As far as surveys go, we often use surveys heavily when we're doing large projects, like the A Newburgh Community Vision or the Riverfront Master Plan. I think the Community Vision had like three or four different iterations of a survey. And they're good for getting a lot of information from a lot of people at once, but there's also a question of how we are utilizing those surveys to get more community engagement in the future. How are we reaching back out to those people who answered surveys to tell them how their answers impacted us? And then, down at public meetings, that includes things like this, the City Council meeting, as well as all of our boards and commissions that have public meetings. But it also includes things like open houses when we are doing larger projects. I mean, obviously, COVID has kind of limited some of how we are able to have public meetings right now. But when we were doing public meetings, there's also a question of, when you're having a public meeting, what is the purpose of it? Is it just to push information out, or are you trying to get information back as well? And how are you communicating that back to the people that you're with? As well as, we also have participation in other organizations. And when I say that, I mean that as city employees who are participating in other organizations as members or on their boards. So, we have people who are part of the Rotary Club, the Newburgh City Club, as well as people who sit on boards for like the Shahalem Innovation Accelerator, it was what it's called. And so, there's a question there of, one, do we know everyone who's involved in these organizations? Do we have sort of an inventory of that list of people, and how are they utilizing that to engage with others? Do they know what projects we should be talking about when they go to these meetings? Do they know about projects from different departments that they could be talking about when they go to these meetings? And one of the biggest benefits, I would say, of having participation in other organizations is that all these other people who are also part of the organization now know someone at the city. And that's often the first step for a lot of people in becoming engaged, is just knowing a friendly face with the city. Obviously, they know you as their elected official, but having someone that you know in a department and who can speak more closely to kind of some of the problems that they might be facing is really important. Next slide, please. So, as we're talking about all of this, we also need to talk about what is stopping people from being engaged. So, we know that engaged and informed residents create better communities, so we also need to know what is stopping people from that. The first one, the curse of knowledge, is a cognitive bias that a lot of people face. And if you haven't heard of this experiment before, I would like it as an example. It's a classic experiment in the 1990s where they had tappers and listeners. And the premise was that the tappers would be told a tune that they had to tap out, like Happy Birthday or Twinkle Twinkle Little Star, and they would tap it out on the table. And they would have to guess how often the listeners would know what song they were tapping out. And when asked, how many, like what, how many guests or how many songs they would get right, the listeners would, tappers assumed that listeners would get at least 50% of the songs right that they were tapping out. When they actually did the experiment, they only got 2.5% of the songs right. And the reason is because if you're tapping out a song, you can hear that song in your head versus the person who's listening does not have that knowledge and cannot meet you right there. And so, whenever we're talking about something within the city, we come with a cognitive bias of a curse of knowledge. And so, what this means is that when you know something, it's hard to imagine what it's like not to know it, basically. We assume that others know what we know, and we then get frustrated when they don't know what we're talking about or don't get it. And so, it's about educating your audience about your terminology or the expressions that you're using, or if you are using words that they might not know. And it's about doing this without doing it in a condescending manner because we all come with this curse of knowledge, so we need to know. I can't necessarily use these abbreviations or acronyms that I always use because even though they're second nature to me, they might not be to someone else. So, it also means that if someone tells you something is confusing, you don't get to decide it's not confusing. It's confusing, and you need to address that. And the reason you do is because if something's confusing, people often give up on it. And so, we need to make community engagement as easy as possible. So, the second reason people might not be engaged is that they don't know how to be engaged, or they are just unable to access the resources to be engaged. So, this, you know, goes along with how are we asking people to be engaged? Is it only through surveys? Are those surveys only online? Do they know how to access those surveys? If they're not on social media, how do they hear about them? Are we laying out steps to engage clearly? And are we just making it as easy as possible for people to let their opinion to be heard? And this also goes with the next point, language and cultural barriers, which you talked about a bit with DEI. If you can't understand the language, you can't engage, and that's a really tricky thing. And it's also limiting our ability to be a better city because we can't engage with people who could inform us on things that we're not aware of right now. There's also, we have to go back to the thought that their opinion won't make a difference. And this goes to how we communicate how their community engagement has impacted the decisions that we've made. If you're asking people for their opinions, and then you don't reach back out to them to tell them the final results or share those connection points, then it's hard for people to want to be engaged again because they feel like the first time they did it, it didn't result in anything. We also have to think about information overload and cutting through the noise. How are we addressing things? Are we making them relevant? Are we showing people how issues impact them directly and showing examples? Are we utilizing the classic techniques to get the message through, which is, you know, making it personal, making it simple, engaging, clear, valuable, interactive, and relevant? And it's our job to make sure it is, so. And then, finally, trust. Do people trust us with their engagement? Are we making them feel heard when they engage with us? And this will go to customer service, which I believe Will and Cosmic will talk to you about in a later City Council meeting. Next slide, please. So, this goes to the point, you have to build your network before you need it. You can't expect people to participate if you've never reached out to them before. You have to put in work to get people to participate. It's not about just expecting them to. And so, this means building networks and community engagement with ongoing and sustained relationships. You also can't, when you do get someone to participate, you need to sustain that relationship. And so, that takes effort as well. And so, that is about building trust so that you have people that you can call on, which also goes along with follow-up. And so, also, do they know that others could also engage? How are you telling them that your opportunities can be spread to others as well? And how are you inviting them to invite others in? Next slide, please. So, here are just some ideas/future opportunities that we have. So, one of the first ones is See Click Fix. This is gonna be a customer service tool as well, just to go over that app again. It's, any resident can download it, and if they see a problem on the street or in the community, they can take a photo of it, and then they can upload that photo, and it'll do a place marker, and they can essentially describe the situation. What's cool about See Click Fix is that it has a comment feature back. So, once a problem is submitted, we can actually write a comment back to them to let them know that the problem's being acknowledged, and when it has been given to someone to fix it. And then, once that problem has actually been fixed, we can give them another message that says, "Thank you for giving us the problem, and we have solved the problem. If you need anything else, please contact us further." So, we're almost ready to launch this. My goal is the end of April, or not April, it's the end of August, the month we're in now. We will be pushing out this as an opportunity for people to engage. Next, the Communications Consultant. I believe Dan talked about this at the last City Council meeting. The RFP is currently out for a Communications Consultant, and we're really focusing on public engagement with the RFP. And so, we're developing strategies around community and public engagement. It's not just about making things pretty. Once again, it's not about promotion or PR. It's really about creating sustainable strategies, as well as internal strategies for how we're communicating with one another and giving people the tools they need to be successful for engagement. Other ideas/future opportunities we've heard about is Latino Outreach Coordinator. I don't speak Spanish, and so this is definitely an opportunity for us to reach out to a large part of our population that we don't currently have a Latino Outreach Coordinator for, specifically for the city. Town Halls/Block Clubs, that was one of the strategies that was identified in the Community Vision earlier. And so, that's just another opportunity for people to engage, especially if you're having them, you know, where you're actually around the city, not in one place, so that people can access those easier. Reader Boards is just one of those simple things that you can use to spread information. More connection to outside groups and task forces. As I was saying before, when you do have people who are staff of the city engaging those groups, it gives them someone to, you know, contact if they ever need to. Citizens Academy is really about teaching people about local government, so this is going more to the community leadership that we're also talking about right now. And so, this is teaching people about local government, how to get engaged in local government, and making it accessible for people as well. And ideas/future opportunity that might be further down the road, once we have a communication strategy in place, is a community engagement software. There are other communities that use these, and it just creates a more streamlined area for people to engage with the city easier. And those are usually on websites, so creating, you know, rolling FAQs so people can find previously asked questions that they might also have. And finally, an editorial content calendar. This goes to the idea that everyone should be sharing the same story at the city. So, if we have overarching projects and goals that we want to reach, every time that someone goes to another organization or participation club, they should be telling that story. And so, this is also a longer-term strategy, and it's really taking stock of what we're doing for the entire year and then trying to figure out where messages can fit throughout that year, and then really focusing on messages for like certain months of the year. If we have five things that we want to talk about, that's great. How do we make those like the star of two different months this year? Next slide, please. All right, so meet people where they are. This means both physically meet people where they are and mentally meet people where they are. If people haven't agreed to a concept or goal, it's hard to engage them on how to accomplish that goal. So, that's kind of the mental one. As far as like physically meeting people where they are, we need to understand what barriers might be in the way for participation in both community leadership and engagement. The Director of UNIDOS, Miriam, once told me that holding meetings in a police building might limit the amount of people, the amount of Latinx people who are willing to participate just because they might be wary of law enforcement. And that's a reality that we need to acknowledge and then find strategies around. This also goes to translating material. Are we making it easily understandable? Is everything written in plain English? Are we translating materials? Think it's translated. And are we taking an effort to look back at what we've done before and figure out what the problems were and how we can make those better in the future so that people might be better able to engage with those? It's also relevant for leadership. So, how are we setting people up for success in leadership? Do we, do people understand the way the city operates? This goes to the Citizens Academy. And do they feel comfortable asking the right questions? As well as, who are we reaching out to now, and how do we expand on that? How do we bring more people into leadership opportunities and understand how to make those more accessible? My final point would be that it's our responsibility as the city to engage and inform residents. It's not the responsibility of residents to seek out information or try to force us to let them be engaged. And so, I really see community engagement and community leadership as serving the community. And so, it's all a question of how we can better do that. Next slide, please. So, that brings us back to questions for the council. If you have questions for me or any discussion points, that would be the time.
And I would, yeah, maybe if I can jump in before the questions, give you time to read the screen. You know, I would just say that, as you can tell, you know, we're in good hands right now. I think Lacy's got a good vision and a solid understanding of how to accomplish tasks, especially when it comes to engagement. You know, I think that leadership and engagement, to me, especially based on the Community Vision document that was created and approved last year, really speaks to a social sustainability plan and, you know, that third leg of a triple bottom-line approach. How do we get people to give us their best ideas? How do we get them involved and invested in working collaboratively with the city and frankly, with themselves? I mean, just putting people in a room and trying to give them the tools to dialogue and to work on things without necessarily the city taking a lead on it, I think is maybe sometimes an ideal. And, you know, just making sure that we're empowering our staff to be prepared. As she mentioned in one of the slides, you know, the idea of a staff ambassador, where you're providing training to our staff, that they're able to really speak to the projects and the things that are happening outside their own department and across the city, and bring that information back as well so that we're just more responsive. You know, I think a lot of those things are super important. And then, you know, just the idea that what I would love to get us to, which is many years maybe down the path of engagement, is where we're seeing leaders coming up, high school students and maybe even younger kids involved in government. We're creating a system where they're informed on how to be effective in approaching policy issues, and we're actually able to see, you know, the next generation leading and taking over roles and responsibilities in the community. I think that's really kind of a measure, a benchmark for me of where we would be successful in community leadership. And it goes hand-in-hand with that idea of engagement, where we're giving them tools to engage on policy issues, to understand the importance of engagement on policy issues, and the impact that their voice can have on their community. And so, I see the ability to get beyond talking about projects and really talk about issues and talk about themes. And Councillor Bacon and I talk about this on a weekly basis, the idea of talking about solving problems, right? You know, rather than, you know, being frustrated by the problem, how are we gonna solve the underlying issues and the root cause things? And I think it's only through engagement that we're really gonna be successful in that, but not necessarily reflecting every time on, you know, this is a project that we at the city want to tell you about. It's, tell us, and let's talk about these big issues and how we move down the path on them. So, I guess those are the things I would say, and ultimately, I feel really great about where we are in staff support. And, you know, I think generally speaking, I'm excited to hear back from this request for proposals that... that, uh, would bring on a community engagement consultant and see what we can do in terms of making some headway on that.
All right, comments or questions, folks? For Lacy or Dan?
Mr. Mayor.
Let's please Stephanie.
So I really liked this presentation. I feel like it is very much in line with what we talked about when we did our goal setting. Even though this wasn't specifically in our goals, I think this really hits the nail on the head in terms of what we talked about for sort of what we want to see for this community engagement. And having been on the Newburgh Visioning Committee, I, I think it falls right in line with that as well. Some of the things that I know that we have talked about before with council is I would really like to see council. I mean, obviously we're stuck at home right now, but I would like to see council go on the road, that we're not at the public safety building for every, um, for every, uh, meeting, but that we're all over the place. Not just for reasons like people not wanting to come to the public safety building, but also for reasons people just literally can't get that far. So looking at doing meetings in different places, um, in Newburgh so that we are closer to home for a lot of people. One of the ideas that we had bounced around before is to add some council meetings that wouldn't necessarily be meetings, but they would be sort of like listening sessions or town hall types of things. And I think I'd really like to see that sort of balance between, um, asking people to do work and engaging them in a way that looks more social and more about us giving back to the community versus asking them to volunteer for us, uh, which I think they show up for us really well in those ways. But I would like to see, um, some more ways of getting out in the community that look a little more social. The Newburgh Visioning Bash that we had at the very end, so it was last August. It was surprising how many people came out for that. And we weren't asking them to give us feedback necessarily or do anything, but to just come and sort of do what we, like to do in terms of socializing. So I'm really excited about this and I'd really like to see us being more visible in, in places like schools, some of the retirement homes, different places in the city. So I love this.
All right, anyone else? I can't see you all, so you'll have to speak up.
Me, this is Elise. Stephanie, kind of summarized that really well. The only thing I would add is that, um, just add on to what she said around the town halls or listening sessions is I would love to see, um, a listening session for each council goal that we have. And, um, not that, um, well, I won't comment on that, but what the school board has had out, um, they had a listening session. I think got a lot of feedback from community members. And I think that it would be just a really good opportunity to even just plot those out through the end of the year of, you know, the fifth Monday or whatever of the month, doing, doing one per goal. And even if like one of each councillor wanted to take one goal and facilitate the listening session so that it's not on city staff to do that, um, I think that would be really pretty easy to do, um, through a Zoom call. And the other just question I had is around the, and I may have missed this, but around the lead organizations and what Lacy's thoughts are of how she would go about or how we would all go about prompting different organizations to participate. Um, and if there are lead organizations that you kind of have in mind from historical buy-in or input, I'm sure there are. But I think it would be a, a good opportunity to take a fresh look at, um, smaller organizations in our community that may be, um, a good opportunity for them to step up into this, um, this opportunity and, and have a leadership type role.
All right, who else?
I will go, uh, Mr. Mayor. So one thing that I was thinking as, uh, they were talking about potentially like having some sort of like civic leadership project. I know that Washington County has one with Adelante Mujeres where participants of like underrepresented communities completely hands-on leadership training. And so they go through five different sessions, including public speaking, uh, the city rights and responsibilities, volunteering and engagement, environmental justice. And so these five different sessions are meant to equip them, uh, the participants to actively participate in the civic life. But it's kind of like an introduction and I think that would be really helpful here with the, uh, in the city of Newburgh. Because for example, I went out to Marion County with Capus Leadership Institute to participate, um, in an introduction to how to be engaged, how do you, uh, participate in, um, in the city? So as we can see, if we're trying to really, um, include more folks from the community who are not currently engaged, it's really hard if they don't understand the language that we're talking about. So I think it would be awesome if we can look into this to see, um, if there's any possibility of doing something like this here in, uh, Newburgh. And I know they've been very successful, um, over in Washington County with their partnership with Adelante Mujeres.
Mayor? Sorry, my voice is very deep today. I don't know why. I've been in conference calls all day. Um, one of the things a couple of years ago they had at the LOC was, uh, League of Oregon Cities, um, was student councils where you'd actually convene a student council and they would solve city problem, their city issues and bring them back to us. It was really fascinating and, um, a lot of fantastic out of the box ideas because they don't have the, you know, they don't have all the been told no's so many times, um, by government yet. And those kids were brilliant and build future leaders. And that's certainly a project I would like to work on, um, so it doesn't, doesn't, uh, put a lot of burden on staff since I already have a lot of connections at the high school and work with a lot of high school students already.
All right, thank you. I'll, I'll say, I'll say this, and this underscores a little bit what Elise says. And you're gonna probably hear me say this, um, as we go throughout, um, throughout all the departments and all the discussions. I think, you know, the idea that more engagements develops a better community, I can, I can accept that. That, that's true. But I think they have to be again focused on the five goals that the council set out. You know, um, actually, community engagement and community leadership weren't a goal, as, as Elise mentioned. But, and so therefore I think any kind of public participation needs to go back to what the five goals are. If we are interested in sustainability, then sustainable Newburgh is something we hit hard. As, as Denise said, kids are interested in sustainability, that's an area we can draw them in. But in all of these, and I believe in all department reports, we ought to come back and say, what are you doing against those five goals? In every way, so every single report, whether it's from IT, community engagement, whatever it is, we come back to those five goals. Then it makes sense to me as to why we're trying to engage. If we're trying to engage the Latino population because of DEI, awesome. If we're trying to engage the youth because of sustainability, perfect, right? But I, I think there really needs to be the focus as to why we're doing it beyond making a better community. The other thing I'd say is that I think there's a lot of efforts that are going on now. Every one of the councillors is on at least one committee and probably a board or two. So there's that representation. I think the idea of relaying stories that we can all share at these various meetings or in our daily lives is great. I also think there's a number of other efforts that are going on right now that we need to make sure that are, they are following again that notion of the five goals. So the Equity Task Force, obviously that's clear what that is. The community partner calls every other week. That's a COVID thing, but that's also response. And I think also the other one is customer service. So if we're gonna start talking about getting a business champion on board, that person, their main job, I think, is gonna be to do, um, customer service from the business aspect. So again, we tie it back to those five overarching goals, um, seems to me. So, um, otherwise I think it's great, great presentation. I think it's neat. I think everything else that's been said about, um, you know, going out, doing town halls, all of that. I'm all for it again, as long as we tie it back to those five goals. So there it is. All right, anybody else? Anything else? I got, uh, is that good? Dan, Lacy, does that, does that work or?
I think it works, yeah. I mean, I would just say, um, specifics to the goals and tying things back. I mean, we have updated our, our communication forms so that it, those goals are on there. So overly trying to link things back. So, uh, when it come to council, at least you'll see those, but certainly understand where you're, where you're coming from. And, and I appreciate what, what I heard from, from the group, you know? So I assume Lacy's nodding, so Lacy's got something to work with. And, and I do think, you know, this is a sustainability goal, honestly. I mean, it is a social sustainability goal because people can't be involved and can't be invested in our community without knowledge and information, you know, knowledge of the process and, and what the heck's going on, you know? And so, um, yeah.
And, and we can't know what people want unless they're engaged. I think that's the even bigger picture. If we're not listening to them and engaging them, we're just, you know, seven people winging it with some city staff.
Right, well, hopefully all of us are, are listening to our various peoples out there. And, and we want to encourage that. And I tried to encourage that on every one of those videos is to say, you got suggestions, comments, whatever, you know, send the emails in. And some do, so there you go. All right, cool. We've got, unless, we good, Lacy, we good? Yeah? All right, I got 5:40, do we want? Dan, do you want to do the, the city managers' report now? Do we wanna?
Sure, I think I can probably do it quickly, um, if that, that works for everyone. So, you know, we continue to work on COVID, not surprisingly. You know, uh, it's really at this point, working through reimbursements and, and programs that we think we can spin up from, uh, allocations of money that we've been, uh, either offered or that are competitive and, and we can apply for. And so we're, we're in the process of applying for more funds and, and we're leveraging funds that are available to us. A, a long ago, we were reimbursed 152,000, uh, for early COVID programming. Uh, we just submitted 170,000 dollars of reimbursements and, um, and programming. And so that draws against, uh, at least some of that draws against, uh, an allocation that we were offered from the state of about 706,000. So we're also as staff, working on some, uh, ideas of resources that will help us continue to do work, uh, both telework, you know, creating workspaces. I think I mentioned before, the idea of, uh, converting some of the, um, archives, annex, uh, space into workstations. It will allow some physical distancing, um, you know, software so that we're able to be more paperless and, or, you know, provide services that people don't have to come into city hall or, or wherever to consume. So we're just, we're trying to, to think about ways to encourage good behavior and to keep both our staff and public safe. And, you know, we're also, as I think, well, I'm not sure if everyone follows the daily count, but I think today was the highest that I've seen in Yamhill County, but 27, uh, cases. And, um, yes, we're also conscious of the fact that we're gonna be having staff in contact with the disease. It's just inevitable at, at some level. And so we're really trying to be vigilant there and to provide guidance. And, you know, I think take a conservative approach so that we're able to continue operations. It's really critical to me that we operate on behalf of the community. And, and that if we're, um, if we're able, you know, we, we should try to, to observe, uh, proper public health procedures to stay, uh, healthy and, and to keep ourselves, uh, you know, functioning. So trying to be conservative there. And one of the things we did recently, uh, today, I think this, uh, got some biohazard containers out to the various, uh, facilities so we can dispose of, uh, things when we clean or, you know, PPE when we are, um, you know, essentially, you know, in the public, uh, spaces. And so a safer way to dispose of, of potential contaminants. So, you know, just continuing to improve the, the process we have in-house. Just a quick update on, uh, the council vacancies and, and elections and things like that from the information that I've gotten from Sue, and she can correct me if I'm wrong here. But, um, at this point, uh, we've, uh, think two, possibly three, um, folks who have, uh, submitted applications for vacancy in District Four. And obviously, um, will, or you all will interview next week during, or next, sorry, next council meeting during the work session time. And so depending on how many candidates you have, obviously we, we budgeted an hour. So hopefully we'll, um, we'll have a good discussion there, um, and perhaps more will come in. With the elections, I believe we now have at least a submitted candidate for each of the various, um, seats. District One, I, uh, understand that we got some paperwork this morning. And that was from councillor, councillor Yarnell Hallman. District Three, uh, councillor Bacon and Adam Goffey have submitted and are confirmed, uh, as filed. District Five, we have, um, a number of candidates, Shai Montoya, uh, Merrill Kunkel, Nicholas Mares, and I believe, uh, Mike McBride submitted today. So I'm not sure that he's confirmed yet, but I'm getting a thumbs up, uh, or maybe it's a finger. But, um, I think it's a thumbs up for Sue. Sorry, and keeping it professional, folks. And, uh, just a little bit of an update on the, um, internal workings, uh, for the last couple of weeks. Department heads did a DISC training. So it's a style assessment, uh, really good for, uh, working in teams and for, uh, really working on work style. It's not a, a right or wrong kind of thing. And it's really about understanding differences, uh, communication with different styles and different types of approaches to, uh, work-related issues. And so, uh, you know, felt like it was a really good opportunity for us to learn from one another. And so we debriefed on that for a few hours, had some good sharing and I think some learning opportunities, which is great. And I think we'll hopefully continue to roll that DISC training out to other work groups. I think, again, it's really just informative of, um, how to work with one another, crazy thought. And so, um, that was facilitated by, uh, an outside consultant and, you know, sort of given, um, blessing slash encouragement for departments to, to use more of our services. And then, um, in addition to that, working on, uh, some executive coaching opportunities and just trying to find some coaches that might be available for us to all, you know, work with. And that's something that I personally am, am seeking out for myself and, and just trying to encourage others to take up as well. On the recruitment side, um, Heather Gantz with Novak Consulting Group, uh, just gave me an update this morning on assistant city manager search. We have 74 applicants on, yeah, that's a lot. And it doesn't close for another week. So it's entirely possible, knowing that those things go to the end and people submit at the last minute a lot of times, that we could have, uh, a big jump at the last minute. The Public Works Director recruitment is a little slower. Only have six applicants, but, um, I know that Heather was sharing a lot of folks have had outreach to her. And so she's, she's hopeful that there'll be a significant uptick there. So the ACM closes on the 10th, uh, week from today, the Public Works Director on the 24th. And so, um, we'll begin working through processes there on interviewing. And then, um, just a quick update on the diversity, equity and inclusion work. Been having ongoing discussions with, uh, securing a consultant for the internal, uh, work. The equity assessment would be the first piece of work there for, uh, the city. And so kind of gathering some demographic information for us as staff and, you know, policy review and things of that nature. So very internal focused, but, um, you're really trying to get some of the data that I think, uh, we've talked about a lot of times about how important that is to be able to, you know, kind of have a, a line and, you know, a starting point and then be able to, to make some changes. And so that, uh, equity assessment would result in a report and in just suggestions for the city organization to improve. And I, just a last little bit, I, uh, participated in a webinar on, uh, let's see, it was called Building and Maintaining an Equity Mindset in Local Government. And so, you know, continue to personally look for some resources in DEI, but I think also just trying to look for some resources and trainings that we can share widely. And so, um, on the lookout, if you see anything, let me know. And happy to evaluate it and, and hopefully, um, start down the path of some training resources for staff as well. And that's it.
Questions for Dan? Anyone? Uh, Dan, when you men- mentioned DISC training, I thought you were talking about DISC golf. And I was wondering why I wasn't signed up. I was like, wait a second, wait a second.
We can do that as a retreat, maybe, right? You know, it's a sort of a different DISC.
That's right, happily, happy to do that. What about issue tracker? What about issue tracker? Aside from the flag, do we have anything?
Nothing new. I think we had, um, you know, we'd had it, uh, the tourism discussion had it in there from the last time, but no additions that I'm aware of.
All right. Well, I've got, I've got 6:50 and, um, unless anybody's got anything else for the moment, we can reconvene at seven o'clock and, uh, and go from there. All righty, thank you again. Stop your video, you're.